The live stream is up and running.
All right, it's seven o'clock, so I'll call the May nineteenth meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order, and we'll start with the pledge allegiance.
One nation, God.
Indivisible. Justice.
All right, thank you. We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Bartlett?
Here.
Supervisor Headland?
Here.
Supervisor Spore?
Here.
Supervisor Steen?
Here.
Supervisor Zanz?
Present.
Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Maves?
Here.
Supervisor Quinn?
Here.
Supervisor Rogers?
Here.
Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Kneer?
Here.
Supervisor Crumry?
Here.
Supervisor Calabrese?
Here.
Supervisor Keeter?
Here.
Supervisor Vogel?
Here.
Supervisor McCullough?
Here.
Supervisor Story?
Here.
Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Here.
Supervisor Niehoff?
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse?
Here.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Here.
Supervisor Trip?
Here.
Supervisor Pragno?
Excused.
Supervisor Jensen?
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Bauer?
Here.
Supervisor Lino?
Here.
And Supervisor Hartung?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum called, meeting is official. Approval of minutes. Has anybody had time to look at the minutes from last month?
I saw move.
Supervisor Steen moves.
Second.
Supervisor Johnson seconds. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes as printed, say aye.
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 Opposed. Opposed. Motion carried. Presentation of petitions memorial and other communication, we have none. Public comments, we have none. Appointments. To the Health and Human Services Board, I appoint to succeed Sarah Schaefer Alexandra Hall. And for the Transportation Coordinating Committee, appoint to fill the unexpired term of Dolores Caitlin Austin Witt. I need a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Moving on to the report of the county manager, COVID-19 update.
Thank you. As always, we keep track of the numbers here in Dunn County. Latest report is that we have had 4,670 persons who have been confirmed with the virus. Of those, thirty-one are currently active. That includes three Dunn County residents who are in the hospital. Two of those are actually younger people in their thirties, as an interesting and perhaps important notation. We remain at thirty-two deaths. It's a unfortunate statistic, but it's not going up, and that's a good thing. There are another four hundred and seven residents that are probable. Those are the ones that have been tested with the antigen testing or are symptomatic. As far as vaccines are concerned, we've done thirty thousand seven hundred and eighty-two total doses. Fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine Dunn County residents have completed the vaccine series. That's just under thirty-three percent of the total population. That last thing should be borne in mind. That means of the total population in Dunn County. Two out of three are still not vaccinated. We want to encourage everybody who is eligible to receive the vaccine, that's people's twelve and older, to get the vaccine. It's the fastest way to continue the trend toward returning to normal and all the things that we enjoy doing together. Last thing that I will add on COVID-19, the CDC's recommendation, recommendations regarding vaccinated persons is being fully evaluated by staff in terms of the protocols that we follow here for county facilities and buildings. There are other considerations that, as a unit of local government, we have to bear in mind, including regulations from OSHA, from the Americans with Disability Act and the Health Information Protection Act, HIPAA. So we don't have necessarily the same leeway to, you know, wholeheartedly drop all of the protocols without due consideration on those. That having been said, staff is working hard on updating and amending those protocols, and hopefully we'll be able to take some steps again toward normalcy here in the not-too-distant future. I see that our public health director, KT Gallagher, is with us this evening. KT, is there anything you'd like to add on the COVID-19 update?
Unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, KT or Paul, you've had thirty thousand and have had one shot, fourteen thousand are complete. Is there a lot of them that are J&amp;J that are in that thirty thousand, or did we have a lot of them done in the last three, four weeks?
Sure, so if I can speak to that, we have had thirty, total thirty thousand doses. We haven't had a ton of J&amp;J. I think we're under five hundred for our county, but I can find that number for you due to the pause, and we saw a lot of anticipation among our stout students. And unfortunately, because of the pause, many of them had already left by the time it was available to them. But we still encourage people to find whatever vaccine works best for them and their schedule, and we continue to have J&amp;J at the Health Department for folks that are interested.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the supervisors? I'll remind you, yes, Supervisor Kennedy.
Does anybody have any idea why Dunn County residents are not getting into have the vaccine as much as a lot of the other counties?
Maybe KT can answer that for us. In other words, why are percentage numbers lower, is what you're asking?
So I'm sure that folks that are much smarter than I am are gonna write dissertations on this topic, but there appears to be a rural-urban divide. We are on the rural side of that. There also seems to be some differences in uptake based on educational attainment and socioeconomic statuses and age. So we have pretty good uptake among our folks that are sixty-five or better here in Dunn County, but even among this demographic, we are at about seventy-one percent of our folks that are sixty-five or better have completed their series. And most adjacent counties are at eighty-one percent. So even among our folks that are at highest risk for adverse health outcomes, we do have a reduction in uptake. So there, there is some suggestion that folks really want to have a conversation with their doctor, and we encourage people to do that. But it also could be that we are the perfect confluence of a lot of factors discouraging people from receiving or seeking vaccine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I wanna remind you that I can, I can only see part of you. And so if somebody has somebody has a question, don't be afraid to speak up. All right, seeing none, we will move on with the purchase orders in excess of forty thousand dollars.
And you have the spreadsheet, it's rather, rather brief. There's only one purchase order of over forty thousand dollars, that's three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to the state of Wisconsin as our annual payment on the family care program.
Any questions on that? If not, we'll move on to the county clerk search.
And this will be the subject of a resolution later in the meeting. What I wanted to say is that we interviewed four candidates. The Committee on Administration participated in those interviews. It took us about six hours. But we think we've got a very good candidate that will be introduced with the resolution later. That concludes my report.
Thank you. For the reports of departments, we have the Child Support Report, the Register of Deeds, and the Veteran Services. I know we have at least, I've seen at least two of the department heads here.
All three are.
All three are. So are there any questions on any of the reports of the departments? I don't see any, so okay, thank you. We'll move on to that, and we'll move on to ten. A, from the Executive Committee, a resolution approving the FY twenty-twenty-one budget adjustment for the Public Health Department. I need a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman, I will move approval.
Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor. Lino seconds. Speaking to this resolution, it's pretty much good explanation there. Does anybody have any questions on it? Or would somebody like to speak to this?
Just very briefly, I'll point out, as, as most of you are familiar, we need these budget adjustments anytime we receive additional money. The, the adjustment authorizes us to accept and spend the funds. In this case, it's ten thousand dollars from a grant and a hundred dollars of miscellaneous for the Public Health Department. So the resolution authorizes its acceptance and expenditure.
All right, I believe this is a roll call vote, so we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Vogel?
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel recorded as yes. Supervisor Zanz?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanz recorded as yes. Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson recorded as yes. Supervisor Bauer? Supervisor Bauer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer recorded as yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Calabrese?
Yes.
Supervisor Calabrese recorded as yes. Supervisor Hartung?
Yes.
Supervisor Hartung recorded as yes. Supervisor Headland?
Yes.
Supervisor Headland recorded as yes. Supervisor Jensen? So absent?
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen recorded as yes. Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson recorded as yes. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy recorded as yes. Supervisor Kneer? Supervisor.
Yes.
Supervisor Kneer recorded as yes. Supervisor Crumry?
Yes.
Supervisor Crumry recorded as yes. Supervisor Keeter?
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter recorded as yes. Supervisor Lino?
Yes.
Supervisor Lino recorded as yes. Supervisor Maves?
Yes.
Supervisor Maves recorded as yes. Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough recorded as yes. Supervisor Morehouse?
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse recorded as yes. Supervisor Niehoff?
Yes.
Supervisor Niehoff recorded as yes. Supervisor Pragno is absent. Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn recorded as yes. Supervisor Rogers?
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers recorded as yes. Supervisor Score? Supervisor Score?
Yes.
Supervisor Score recorded as yes. Supervisor Steen?
Yes.
Supervisor Steen recorded as yes. Supervisor Story?
Yes.
Supervisor Story recorded as yes. Supervisor Trip?
Yes.
Supervisor Trip recorded as yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen recorded as yes. And Chairman Bartlett?
Yes.
Chairman Bartlett recorded as yes.
Thank you. The resolution passes. Moving on to B, from the Committee on Administration, An Ordnance Amending, the County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Five, this is the second reading. Any discussion on this? Anything further? Somebody would like to speak on this?
Mr. Chair, I could.
Supervisor Headland?
Yeah, we introduced it last meeting. There was a small amendment made to it, and that amendment is now part of the latest printing that is in the packet. Hopefully, it meets with everybody's approval. We move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing, oh, Supervisor Rogers, sorry.
I would like to reiterate a comment from last month. I, I do think that this is unnecessary, and it can come back in front of the board for the approval, instead of just being made, the decision made by the county manager.
Any other speaking? To or against? I see none, hear none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Committee on Administration, B two, An Ordnance Amending, Section seven point two ten of the Code of Ordinances relating to the disposal of surplus property. This is the second reading. Would you like to speak to this, Supervisor Headland? Remind us of it?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, thank you. This ordinance was developed by the administration. The ordinance itself has got numerous steps all laid out for the purpose of disposing of any property that has any worth or deemed to have some worth. And then how that property is going to be disposed of is, is very well laid out in this ordinance. Anything then that was sold, I think is, we will sell in the future. I think it's laid out here that we're going to at least try to get our maximum value back out of it. I guess I very much approve of this myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this? I don't see any, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to ten B three, Resolution Appointing the County Clerk. I need a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman. Chairman.
Okay, Supervisor Story moves, and Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Speaking to this, Supervisor Headland, I would assume?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Yes, as previously spoken by our county manager, the whole committee on administration did meet as a group. We did conduct four extensive interviews of four very good candidates, and in the end, we had a unanimous agreement to appoint, or recommend, appoint Andrew Mersell as the, to the officer clerk pending the approval of the full board. Thank you.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving down to ten B four, Resolution Authorizing One-Time Payment to the NDC and Public Health Employees. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Johnson moves. Supervisor McCullough seconds. Speaking to this.
I could, Mr. Chair, this is.
Supervisor Headland, go ahead.
Basically, this is a one-time payment going out to those who are, were, are involved in being healthcare workers or any workers who are deemed eligible by the CARES Act to receive reimbursement for retention of these staff members. Along with the layout or, or background information based on eligibility, there's also a table here that spells out how the Department Administration decided to award these one-time payouts based on the number of extra hours worked or actual hours worked by the staff who is eligible for these payments. Again, I would so recommend this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other speaking to this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I don't know who's asking, but.
Larry?
Oh, Supervisor Bjork, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is really well-deserved. I have no idea who's involved with this, or even how many. I saw a couple mentioned here. But I mean, boy, if there was ever a time when the public and county government needed to do their job, this would, would certainly qualify. So I encourage everyone to support this, and I don't think it takes much argument that this is a good idea, but I just wanted to state my great pleasure in able to comment.
Thank you. Any other speaking?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Kneer here.
Supervisor Kneer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of you may not know that the neighbors hires a lot of pool help. That means people from around the country. And it requires a higher pay, and all this time, the pool help have been receiving extra payment for COVID, for working with COVID patients, and people hired locally have not been receiving it. So this is, as Larry said, a well-deserved ketchup, is what I would call it. They worked all this time, and they saw a person working next to them getting an extra pay, and they didn't. And now they get a little bit back, so I encourage you to vote for this resolution, for this resolution.
Thank you. Any other speaking to this resolution before we vote? I don't see any. All in favor of passing the resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution.
Aye.
Okay, was that, was that a opposition supervisor score, or just a late aye, or for it? I think, I think.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our second ten B, Planning Resource and Development Committee, B one, An Ordnance Repealing, Recreating, Chapter Sixteen of the Code of Ordinances. This would be the first reading. Supervisor Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would actually like to move to refer this ordinance back to the Planning, Resources, and Development Committee for further discussion and possible action regarding the density regulations and other issues for divisions within unzoned towns in the county.
Thank you. I need a second to this.
Supervisor Anderson seconds.
All right, I have a second. Now, speaking to sending it back to committee, Supervisor Quinn?
Thank you. Just briefly, this is, this ordinance was discussed over a number of months, many months by the committee, and we thought we had a good plan to present. And we believe we had offered sufficient opportunity for community input and discussion, articles in the paper, direct mailing to local officials, public hearing. And we were hoping to have an opportunity for a dialogue about it. But it turns out that we, we didn't meet our goals with that regard, and since having, since having passed the And since having, since having passed the motion and ordinance and moved it on to the county board, we'd been approached by representatives from a number of unzoned towns with some thoughtful concerns about provisions in the ordinance. And the committee would very much like to have this, take this ordinance back, meet with concerned residents, review it and see if we can find some solutions to those issues.
Thank you. Any other speaking to sending it back to committee? Supervisor Bjork?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Well, I think it's really important that it does get sent back to the unzoned townships. They presented their case very clearly. And you know, it, it really hinges under local control. And these townships take their responsibilities very seriously and very thoughtfully in the decisions that they make. Not that the county doesn't, but they are elected in their townships by the citizens to rule on some of these decisions. Now, the only question I have for the committee or Mr. Quinn was there was some discussion at one of the meetings where this group presented themselves to the committee that if there would be any changes, that the changes would be taken care of within the committee and not coming back to the county board. And the only question and problem I have with that is if you're not on the committee, not from the district where the unzoned townships is, then you have your, your local representative that you elected to go to the county board would not have a say on it if it doesn't go to the county board as a whole. So I just need a little clarification on in future.
Supervisor Bjork, the, an ordinance that the committee would send would come back to the county board.
Thank you very much.
Any other speaking? So we're voting to send it back to committee. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution or motion, motion passes. Okay, moving on to ten B two, an ordinance proving a rezoning in the town of Menominee. I need Supervisor Quinn moves.
Supervisor Anderson.
Or excuse me Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Morehouse had her hand up first, so Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Speaking to this resolution Supervisor Quinn?
Again, just briefly, this is a pretty straightforward rezone request in the town of Menominee. This is a parcel that is currently in general ag, but is adjacent to other residential parcels. It makes sense to do the rezone. The town board has expressed approval. I would note that in the, in the text that was in our packet, there's a typo that where it's mistakenly referred to as being in one instance, referred to the being in the town of Red Cedar. That has, that, that has been changed in the official documents. So that is been corrected to the town of Menominee.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Moving on to ten C from the Judiciary and Law Committee, an ordinance prohibiting the use and possession of drug paraphernalia. And this is the first reading. I need a motion on this Supervisor Trip moves and Supervisor Bauer seconds. Speaking to this resolution Supervisor Trip?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll let the sheriff explain exactly the, the ordinance. But I will tell you that the Judiciary and Law Committee and the Executive Committee have both vetted the language. And we've gone through it pretty carefully and we're satisfied that it says what we want it to say. Basically, what it does is creates county ordinances that in some ways complement, in some ways expand on state statutes and federal regulations. So those state statutes and federal regulations are all still in place. But on a local level now, if we pass this ordinance, we give law enforcement a local tool that they are also able to use. And if there are specific questions, I saw the sheriff on here somewhere. I think he'd be happy to answer them.
Sheriff, without objection from the rest of the board, would, would you have anything to add? Or are there any questions for either Supervisor Trip or the sheriff?
Supervisor Trip pretty well hit it on the head. This, this ordinance would create a lesser charge. Right now, it's a criminal charge to charge somebody with possession of drug paraphernalia. So it goes on their criminal record for the rest of their life. This would give us a, an option to charge somebody with kind of a lesser offense. It's a forfeiture, like a speeding violation that they can pay the fine and be done with it and put it behind them versus having a criminal record being charged with possession of drug paraphernalia. So it would give officers on the street, the DA's office, a little bit of leeway on some discretion. Somebody that's relatively cooperative and, and gets caught with a pot pipe or something and, and a large quantity of marijuana or something. This could be a simple way to punish them for the violation, but not create a criminal charge on the record.
Thank you. Any questions? From the supervisors?
I have a question.
Okay Supervisor, yeah Supervisor Jensen?
Yeah, I was wondering, are these fines less than they were before or the same?
Well, we don't currently, we currently don't have county ordinance for possession of drug paraphernalia. The fine amount on a criminal charge is defined by a judge and that's, that's to be determined at time of conviction. This would be a fixed fine amount, probably around $200 and like, like a traffic citation, move on. So it, it's tough to compare it to a state statute because those fines are not really determined by a judge.
Oh, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't go to court at all over it then?
They wouldn't need to go to court on it. They could certainly contest it and go to court, just like any other charge issued by law enforcement, but they wouldn't have to. They could simply pay the fine and then be done with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Larry Bjork? You're muted Larry.
Pushed the wrong button. Okay, it's a good thing I don't carry dangerous weapons. Who makes a decision whether it's an ordinance violation or it's a, it's a criminal charge? And in my underlying, really want to know is, is this a bargaining chip for law enforcement to get more information that they may, otherwise may not get?
Yeah, it certainly could be. You know, if somebody's cooperative and, and wants to become an informant, you know, this could be a bargaining chip that they'd be charged with a lesser and not a crime, a, a simple paraphernalia ordinance violation. But it gives both law enforcement on the streets and discretion and the DA's office. So if the DA's office sees somebody come into court that was charged with a state crime, they could offer him a forfeiture ordinance violation for a lesser fine or lesser charge. So they didn't have a criminal record. So it kind of works from both on the street and, and once it gets to the DA's office. So it gives them some leverage as well.
I think it'd be a good move. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have one more question.
Supervisor Jensen and then Supervisor Steen.
So I was wondering how, how this works on citizens out of state? Do you collect it? How, how do you collect that?
It'd be like a traffic citation. You, you issue a summons, a citation, and they're given a court date in the fine amount. And there's actually the court, courts has more leverage if they fail your, if they fail to appear or they fail to pay the fine, then the court pursues that usually a suspension or revocation. They're driving privileges until the fine's paid.
Supervisor Steen, you had a question?
Well, I was just going to say that the explanation that Sheriff Biggin and Supervisor Trip gave to the Executive Committee, I thought was very illuminating regarding some stupid youthful indiscretion that would, wouldn't consign them to a felony their whole life. And if you could reprise that explanation that you gave the Executive Board, I thought it was very good.
I think that may have been reference to the next ordinance on the agenda with sexting ordinance. But yeah, it's, you, you don't want to create a, you know, a criminal record on somebody that, you know, maybe smokes pot and gets caught with a pot pipe somewhere. It gives them an option more of a second chance.
Any other speaking questions? If not, this is the first reading. So we will not vote on it to, tonight. We will take it up next month. Moving on, also from the Judiciary and Law Committee, C two, an ordinance prohibiting minor sexting. And this, this again is a first reading. So I need a motion on this Supervisor Trip moves. Supervisor Bauer seconds. Speaking to this resolution Supervisor Trip?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very similar to the other ordinance, this gives local law enforcement and the DA some options in dealing with what often are relatively minor offenses. And this is what Supervisor Steen was referencing a little bit earlier. Doesn't, this doesn't change any of the state and federal laws about pornography or any of that. Child pornography is a serious crime and, and we certainly don't want to minimize any of those repercussions. But I, I was remarking at the Executive Committee meeting, when, when I first saw this and it came across my desk was my grandson's 13th birthday. And as a 13-year-old boy, he's capable of doing any stupid thing that any person can possibly imagine. And if that involved something that would fall under this, it would allow local authorities to deal with that in a way that the perpetrator could be appropriately reprimanded without having to charge them with a state or federal offense. So it doesn't eliminate any of the current laws that are already on the books that address the more serious issues, but it does give local law enforcement a little bit of leeway in, in handling things locally. So again, the sheriff might be, might be able to fine tune that argument and make a little more sense out of it.
Any other speaking? Sheriff, would you like to add something to this?
Sure, just a little background on this. With the development of smartphones over the years, kids, high school kids are doing stupid things with them. They're, they're taking pictures of themselves and sending them to somebody that they want to attract as a romantic interest, let's say. And say a 14-year-old girl, 15-year-old girl takes an inappropriate picture of herself, sends it to one boy. Those 14, 15-year-old boys aren't going to keep it to themselves. They're, they have a tendency there with all their buddies and show it around, distribute it, things like that. And it's a, it's actually becoming a pretty serious issue in our high schools right now that they're, they're sharing inappropriate photos of themselves and then they get shared amongst classmates and things like that. And the reality is, some of them could be a felony child pornography image. And this is a, this is a way to kind of nip that without going to the full route of a felony. Somebody's looking at over a year in jail or in prison for possession of child pornography when they're making stupid decisions at 14, 15, 16 years old. So this is a little bit of way to nip those issues that we're having in the bud and punish them a little bit, but don't create a criminal record for doing something stupid.
Any other questions? If not, this, this also, like I said, is the first reading and we will take this up next month. Thank you. Thank you to the sheriff. Moving on to ten D from the Facilities Committee, a resolution regarding sustainability and carbon neutrality by 2050. I need a motion for this Supervisor Maves moves Supervisor Lino seconds. Speaking to this Supervisor Maves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, in your packets was a document that the Facilities Committee put together. Supervisor Keeter did a lot of the work. It was a group discussion, but he, he did a lot of the work. So I want to thank Don for that. And it basically just states what the, what the Facilities Committee wanted to pass on to the whole county as far as becoming carbon neutral. And a lot, a lot of this is just common sense. It's saving the county money. And we've actually already started doing it with some of our light bulb replacements. And we've actually started cutting down on our footprint already. And so it'd be a, a good decision to make as far as for sustainability goals for the county and saving the taxpayers' money in the long run. So I, I urge your support of this document.
Thank you. Any other speaking to this?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Larry Bjork?
The ag papers are full of articles, large-scale renewable energy projects expected to increase in Wisconsin. So I mean, this is a pretty current topic. Unfortunately, I think it's become somewhat of a political volleyball bouncing back and forth. And the last thing a person wants to be called is some kind of denier of, of climate change. But I would just like to be reassured that as far as the cost of the county being carbon neutral, that we're not going to spend more money than we need to. I, I, my only question has to do with, I think there's a dual billing in some states where if you receive your home bill for electricity, you can pay more if you've somehow determined that it came from renewable energy versus fossil fuels. So I wouldn't want to lock the county into some type of 30-year agreement where we're going to only buy fuel or energy from something that's carbon neutral. I think the county needs to look out for themselves and buy energy as cheap as possible as it can. And then the other thing, which, which isn't, isn't mentioned here, but, which is the truth in that if you do any traveling in Minnesota or Iowa, if you're not used to seeing windmills, you better get used to it. And it isn't something I want to see out my windows at the farm and that, that energy just not appear. I mean, it has to be generated. It has to be generated by a windmill or it has to be generated by a solar farm. And number one, solar farms take productive ag land that I And number one, solar farms take productive ag land that I've seen out of production. And the windmills, to me, are just a blight on the, on the horizon. And the other thing that, that you need to look at is the transmission of that energy. And sure, we can put windmills here all through Dunn County or St. Croix County or Pierce or wherever, but the energy is needed, you know, in, in metropolitan areas. So you have to transport that energy. So besides getting used to seeing windmills on the horizon, you better get used to seeing a lot of overhead power lines transmission, transmitting the energy. I guess we'd all like to do things as economically as possible. I just don't want to see the county lock themselves into a 30-year agreement that we're going to buy fuel, energy, just because it's carbon neutral.
Thank you. Any other speaking to this? Supervisor Johnson.
Yes, I just have one question for the committee. Did you look into it? Is this obtainable and realistic for the county? That's, that's all I'm asking.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Maves.
We did not do a hard case study to answer that question, but it is a goal and we need to start working towards it. There are no guarantees that we can do this. But like I did mention, we're already moving in that direction as far as changing of the light bulbs, et cetera. We're buying cars that are more fuel efficient, which is reducing our carbon. So, so actually in our everyday lives, we're already working towards that. And so, so this is just a goal. And as with all goals, we have to take a look at it, that, you know, what do we need to improve it, not improve it? And I'd like to respond to Supervisor Bjork's concerns, very good concerns. But anytime that we would be talking about signing any contracts, et cetera, that would come before the full board after a full edited discussion, et cetera. So, so this does not lock us into anything. This is goals that we're putting down on paper to work towards. So that's what this resolution is about.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussions? Supervisor Tripp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I got to looking a little bit at the resolution today a little more thoroughly, I think the, one of the few things that it actually requires the county to do is in about the third or fourth resolved, and that is to use, there's going to be a status report to the county board as part of an annual update of sustainability indicators. That's what it says. So what the county is committing itself to doing right now is to using the principles of sustainability to make decisions about how we go forward. Now, I was not familiar with sustainability indicators. So I, I looked them up and I forget what the website was. It was a private enterprise website. And the first sustainable sustainability indicator is the economy. So if I read the material correctly, sustainability assumes that it will make good economic sense. So to answer Supervisor Bjork's concerns, which are real, I think that sustainability means that we're not going to do something stupid just to establish and follow a set of guidelines that are arbitrary. The first of the sustainability indicators is economic. Does it make good economic sense? If it doesn't, then at least the way I read it, then it wouldn't happen. So, so I'm in favor of this on a whole bunch of levels. The, the most important being the whole idea of not just sustainable in terms of our use of energy, but sustainable in terms of can we continue to make progress for the citizens of Dunn County over a long period of time without running into roadblocks, without being caught short, without being tripping over ourselves? I think this is, you know, sustainability is one of the principles of our, our, our plan, our long-range plan, and I think this fits in very well. And I congratulate the Facilities Committee. I, I'm not real familiar with this material, but the more I look, the more I realize that this is really a well-done document. That this, this is, this is a nice piece of work. So thank you to the Facilities Committee for bringing it forward.
Supervisor Jensen, you're next.
Yes, I don't have a, a problem with working for a goal of becoming energy neutral. What I have a problem with is putting a date on this. I think it should be worded different without a date. Kind of like saying that by that date, something's got to happen.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Maves, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, the, the importance of having a date, as with any goal setting, is that if you don't have a date set, you'll never achieve it. Because if you're always say, and the same is true as in your own households, that you're going to get it done by, something done by tomorrow. Well, tomorrow, you know, yesterday was, tomorrow was yesterday's today. So the importance of a date is that it actually forces you to work towards it. And it's, it's just a goal. The date could be changed. After you get into the program, you can do a reassessment. And so that, that's the importance of actually having a date there because then, then you actually can look at the calendar and say, this is our date, this is our goal. How are we coming? Are we achieving it? Are we not? Do we have to, you know, set things different? So it's just a, it's a work in progress. Thank you.
I saw some other hands go up. Supervisor Vandermeulen was next. Tim will get to you. Go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, a couple of things in response to Supervisor Bjork. I'd just say that I rather like the look of windmills. And some of the, some of the aspects of fossil fuels, such as pipelines that can leak, large tanker trucks, I'd rather look at a windmill than a, than a big tanker truck ahead of me on the freeway, I think. So I think some of the differences here are just problems we've gotten used to and new things on the horizon. The second, second thing I'd like to ask really is if we pass this, who does what to bring it about? Has anybody thought about kind of who's in charge of creating or beginning to create the process by which we work this out?
It'll, it'll be the, I believe it'll be the Facilities Committee in the Facilities Department. And as Supervisor Maves has said, for years now, we have been making decisions, you know, that make, that makes sense economically and for, for the environment, like the LED bulbs and stuff like that, that, that they have done. Supervisor Neoff, you had a...
Yes, I just kind of want to, kind of wanted to reiterate and kind of try and bring things together here a little bit. One of the questions, you know, is, well, how are we going to do this? We, we have a lot of discussion in our Facilities Committee. First thing is, obviously, we as a Dunn County were net users of electricity, not net producers, at least not yet, that I'm aware of. But then we get most of our energy from Excel Energy, which has a goal to be carbon neutral by 2050. So if we basically did nothing and we bought all of our electricity from Excel Energy, by rights, we would then be carbon neutral by 2050. But I think we can do more as a board, and that's what this is starting to put in place. Jim alluded to sustainability indicators. A lot of discussion was had at the meetings. There's things we can do. We can look into more geothermal, like what's, what's going on at the neighbors to help reduce our electricity usage. We can do upgraded insulation in buildings. We can do upgraded windows. We can do upgraded LED lighting. I mean, these are all things that we can put in place. And then we could go building by building, depending upon how the budget is. And we can say, okay, we like to go to all LED lighting. We'd like to upgrade the windows in this building. We'd like to, but those are the safe sustainability indicators that we would put down. And then we would start tracking to that and reporting back if, if, if need be. But I think this is just the first step to say, we have a goal and therefore we have a goal. Now let's work towards that. So I, you know, I, I want to commend everybody, Mike, Ron, Don, Chuck, on this committee for, for hashing a bunch of this stuff out and getting this proposal in front of the board. I support it.
Any other speaking to this resolution? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I need to defend the truck driver on the interstate that's sharing the road, that has a family, that has a right to use the road. And I don't think he should be demeaned. And that fuel that goes down the road or comes down the pipeline is also being used to manufacture windmills. It's being used to manufacture solar panels. So it's sort of like the guy that's braiding the rope that they use to hang him with the next day. So it's like fossil fuels are going to create the change that may come. And just give the guy on the road, you know, a little room. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other speaking to this?
Right.
Supervisor Rogers, go ahead.
And like Tim said, this was a, we worked hard on this to try to make it less political and more, more feasible for just common sense. So I, I also like to commend Don on, on going back and rewriting some of it to make it sound a little more welcoming for everyone. It's, it's a goal and it also makes sense to be more energy efficient and, and good economics. I'm kind of tentative to jump on some of the political issues, but I, I do support this because it makes sense across the board. It's not just from one perspective.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Keter, go ahead.
Yeah, I just like to say, you know, the county has, has really done a pretty good job so far. You take the neighbors and the new government center. We have geothermal in there. And we have all kinds of heat pumps. There's a whole bank on, if you've seen those. And according to some of our facilities people, they say that it only, it really has to get pretty cold before we start using gas to heat the buildings. So, you know, if we can start getting, if we can get the cost of electricity down to the point where it's readily available from renewable sources, we could probably make those two buildings completely electric. There's other things happening, if you've maybe read this, but for instance, San Francisco and San Jose have passed ordinances that prohibit the piping of gas into their new building, new construction. And what starts in California usually works this way. So these are things we can look at. And as far as Supervisor Bork, I understand some of the farmers out in western Minnesota really like the windmills because they're making a lot of money off them and they can farm around them.
$10,000 of destruction per year.
Anybody else? Supervisor Vandermeulen.
I think we're mostly talking about the expenditures for fuel and energy that the county controls directly. Are, are we also talking about the things we promote? For instance, recreation. Cross-country skiing uses less fuel than Snowville operation. And that's just one example of, oh, the Red Cedar Speedway is, is a place where there's a lot of fuel used and a lot of celebration of a, of, of a kind of vehicle that we're beginning to believe we can't really live with in the long term. So are, are we talking about also the things we encourage and promote as a county?
On this resolution, I don't believe so. No.
No, Mr. Chair. This is just for the, the county's, the buildings that the facilities is in charge of. So it's just for the county properties at this time.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Resolution carried. Moving on to D2 from the Facilities Committee. Also, a resolution amending, Resolution 2021-14 Regarding the Red Cedar Speedway. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Maves moves. Supervisor Neoff seconds. Speaking to this resolution, Supervisor Maves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this document that was in your packets outlined some of the changes that the Facilities Committee is bringing forward to the, to the main board. If you look it over, there were four, four major changes as far as what the, the current cases per week level was. Also a change as far as if you could prove that you've had your vaccination, that those people could, could enter the races and, and their entrance would not count against what the total numbers were. There was also an outdoor gathering recommendation is up to 100 now. Or before, if it was zero, but now there can always be at least 100. And then also there was an amendment to allow facilities to make any changes in the future based upon the numbers. Those, those were the four big, big differences here. Nothing else changes as far as the protocols that, that were on the original resolution as far as what the racing association would do and what they had agreed to do and what they have been doing. So at this time, I, I don't know if Mr. Mallor can share his screen to point those things out if, if anybody needs better understanding.
Would anybody like to see those changes? Or do you understand the changes from what was sent to you? I don't see anybody asking to, to have those put up. Supervisor Jensen, you got something?
Yeah, I, I don't see why we need any rules and why we're still micromanaging the racetrack anymore.
All right. Supervisor Neoff. Or Supervisor Lino, excuse me.
Yeah, basically I just have a, a quick question regarding the chart on the second page of the material that was sent out. The status today, in other words, our most recent report from, from KT, where would that, where would that place us in the grandstand maximum permitted with today's numbers?
So if I can, we have a seven-day total cases of 12. And so that's 1.7 cases per day. That would allow 75% of the grandstand or 1,098 people in addition to the 250 in the pits.
Okay, thank you very much. I was just wondering where we lie on that chart at this time. All right, thank you.
And, and in addition of those that have been vaccinated and, and show... have been vaccinated and and show proof of that would be over and above that seventy-five percent in the grandstand. According to this. Any uh, other discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried. I want to thank KT for all she's done uh, working with this. I, I am sure that she has had to put up with uh, some things from some of our constituents that she probably shouldn't have had to. And so I, I'd like to apologize for that from our residents. And thank her uh, for all the work that she has done and the hard work that she's uh, put in working with racing to come up with this. Uh, she really appreciates or she really deserves uh, the credit that we give her. Uh, she's had a very tough job over the, this last year. Um, wow. It's been a, it's been a long time already. So and I hope, I hope she saw that there were a number of supervisors clapping for. All right, uh, moving on. For announcements, our next county board meeting is uh, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And I am planning that it'll be a, a hybrid meeting here in uh, the county bird, boardroom, room uh, fifty-four. That's our goal. I think by then the county buildings will be opened up and uh, I sure hope it uh, nothing happens with these numbers that, that do not let that happen. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is keep Randy uh, Prokno in, in your thoughts. He's in the hospital. He's uh, that's why he's not with us tonight. So keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Uh, anything else before I adjourn? Supervisor McCullough.
Um, so I wanted to commend our nine one one services. On Sunday morning, I was downtown and encountered, encountered a very distressed young man and had to call nine one one and great service and great service from the nominee, the nominee police department as well. Really well done job over.
Wow, that's great. Thank you. It's good to hear, good to hear that from uh, from one of our supervisors to uh, bring that up to us. Thank you. Uh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I just have a question on uh, the procedure going forward uh, with the hybrid meetings. Relating to our individual uh, committees which have a chair and a vice chair. Uh, with Zoom, can the chair then uh, uh, not be present at a committee meeting and still run the meeting when there's a vice chair maybe at the meeting? I just, you know, how, how are we going to handle uh, the leadership in the future here with Zoom?
I would, I would say at a committee level meeting, the, the chair could be absent and attend on Zoom and still run the meeting. Um, I, I think on the, at the county board level, I would try to be here. And if I probably couldn't be here, that I would ask the vice chair to step in if I couldn't be here for a county board meeting. That would be my feeling. Um, I believe that's probably, I, I saw Mister Miller shaking his head in agreement with me. So I think that's probably what'll happen.
And if I may, Mister Chair?
Well, I was gonna add one more thing and then you can. Um, being this is gonna be a hybrid meeting this next month. And also on your committee meetings, please bring your county laptop because you're gonna have to be in with, you know, hooked up with the county uh, Wi-Fi system. And we're going to be Zoom, you know, it's gonna be a hybrid meeting and the public's going to be able to watch our meetings. Uh, somewhat like some other meetings have been televised over the past few years. So you're going to have to bring your, your laptop and uh, please bring your county laptop. Any, did you want to add something else though, Mister Miller?
No, no, that's, that's exactly what I was going to remind them. It's uh, it's your camera. All right. Think of your laptop as your camera so that you could be seen on the meetings.
Uh, room fifty-four is open now. The health department has moved out of here. So uh, some of your committee meetings may, may end up in room fifty-four instead of room sixty going forward. Uh, they'll be putting uh, more audio and and maybe another screen in this room. So anything else before we adjourn? If not, thank you for coming. Thank you for all the staff that it came tonight. I really appreciate that. And thank you for any uh, any of our residents that uh, of Dunn County that have watched this. Thank you very much and uh, goodbye all.